Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The roll call.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
And Alderman Davidson.
Present.
And Mayor Bowman. Present, thank you. We do have a quorum and we do have some special information here tonight. Mr. Scott, would you come forward, please? We want to have the opportunity to identify you and congratulate you. You've been a Henry Scott, been with us for 10 years, ladies and gentlemen. How did you happen to come to the city of Harrisonville?
I came to the city of Harrisonville because I had a daughter and her mother, and she moved to the Harrisonville area. So I moved up there to maintain father-daughter relationship and be a good dad and be a part of her life.
Good for you, congratulations.
Thanks.
So you're firefighter and EMS?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, excellent. What do you love most about being in Harrisonville?
I'd say the weather, probably. It's great weather, the air right, it gets cold, but I don't have the Texas heat, grew up in Texas. Good people, good small-town feel. Town's kind of starting to come back to life a little bit, get some life on the square.
Yes.
So it's been a good transition to see.
What would you like to say about this man on your team?
I started this guy whenever he was a little, small guy. Seeing Henry grow in the organization, I was his captain at one time before I was promoted to this position. He's been very respectful, very loyal customer, employee to the city for many years.
Well, congratulations again. We hope to do this again in many more years.
I appreciate that.
Let's go ahead and do a picture here. This is yours.
Squeeze in now.
Yeah. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations. I'll open the floor now for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the Board of Aldermen this evening? If so, please make your way to the podium. And if you would state your name and address for the clerk.
I'm Larry Strapp. I live at 810 North Patton in Harrisonville. I was questioning what the status is on the presentation on the flooding that we were promised would occur in December when the Corps gave the initial presentation, October 7th. And then I also still have some concerns about the property, which some of you are aware of, and I've extended invitation to them or the Board of Aldermen and to those that did not get the invitation, I extend it now for you to come out and visit the property and see the problems for yourself. So can you give me an update on the Corps' presentation or a follow-up on it?
We'll have the city administrator follow up with you. Okay, anything else?
Okay, and then the response on the appeal on the stormwater management section code 415 of the ordinances?
I believe the engineer and the administrator are responding to you on that also, correct?
We am.
I believe Mr. Martin responded to some of that on your email, from the email that I seen that he responded to you on.
The emails he responded to me on was funding grants, applications, nothing on the stormwater management.
Okay, we'll ask them to follow up with you again. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strapp. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the Board this evening? Seeing none, I'll close public participation. I would ask you at this point to please silence your cell phone. I will move on to the approval of the minutes. First is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session, February 18th. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen, February 18th, 2020.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson and a second from Alderman Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those men stand approved. The agenda items, Council Bill 007.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to approve payment to Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for purchasing GIS software and online services as part of the three-year GIS software system upgrade for the city of Harrisonville in the amount not to exceed $15,000 a year.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Mr. Patterson.
This GIS software is something that gets used every day by different departments. Currently, we have three licenses, one we call a full license, which allows a lot of editing, and then two lesser licenses that allow you to make maps and do some other things, but not the editing. Right now, currently, we are also contracting GIS work out to Mark. When they do that, they have to come down here and physically sit behind one of our computers to do it. This is a whole new approach to doing GIS, and it's being used a lot more frequently. It's a, this is a special plan done from ESRI. They call it 15 for 15, $15,000 for unlimited licenses to towns under 15,000 population. That is currently a little over three times what we pay now, almost four, but we, like I said, we only have three licenses. This will allow us to have it on anybody's computer we want. The other thing it'll allow is it's got a mobile version so that the guys in the field could load up a map of the utilities, water lines and all, and see it in fields from having to come in and have us print out a map. It is a three-year agreement. We can break the lease at any time we want. You're going to pay, obviously, your first year, everything's upfront, but if everyone says this isn't working in year two, we don't have to go through. You'll look, if you see on the contract, they had some money in there for training. We've crossed that out. We all have the training budget, and I would expect that anybody who needs additional training in this software will use their training budget to do it. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the mobile app is a new feature that we don't presently have?
Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Patterson from the Board?
I make a motion to approve, Council Bill 007.
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve Council Bill 007, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Council Bill 007 becomes Resolution 006. Council Bill 008.
A resolution of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to include and execute the DNR required one-year follow-up to the city's contract with Burns and McDonnell and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Patterson.
Again, when we received funding through the SRF program, we had to do a one-year evaluation to ensure that the plant was running as it was designed. It was originally thought that this would be somewhere around $12,000. When it came time to do it, DNR actually couldn't remember what they wanted on it. So Burns and McDonnell did some talking with them, and what they came up with ends up costing us just under $8,000. It was a requirement from DNR, even though they can't remember exactly why. I wish I could get it better.
Unfortunately, they couldn't remember what the cost was going to be either.
Right.
No problem there.
So I would ask that you approve.
Any questions for Mr. Patterson?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Miller and a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve Council Bill 008, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 008 is approved and becomes Resolution 007. Mr. Crowe, public hearing for ACCI.
This comes to you from the Planning Commission with the unanimous recommendation of approval. ACCI Specialty Products at 1701 Vine, just across the street from Casco, has asked for a special use permit to maintain two Conex storage containers at the southwest corner of their property. We don't think this is blight or an eyesore in any way. We recommend approval, subject to three stipulations. One is they do not store any waste or hazardous materials in there. Two, the, the Conex, the storage containers do not set in the drives that are at the side or rear of the property for fire access if it's needed. And three, that it's a five-year term. Henry, or I mean Vincent Mancini, Henry Mancini, Vincent Mancini, the superintendent of the general manager of ACCI is here, and maybe he can tell you a little bit more about the application and the need for it before we go to public hearing.
Mr. Mancini, you want to step forward?
Mr. Crowe. Madam Mayor, Alderman. The, as explained to the Planning Commission, the, these Conexes are actually being used as for storage of one of our customers' equipment. This is, they're actually paying rent on them. And the reason we had them, this equipment, is we have a contract with them to make specialty materials on and off over the course of last year, this year, and the next three years, which could lead to a substantial production contract afterwards. This material is used in the, as an adhesive or high-impact area that's currently used in aircraft wingtips on the wingnuts. It's a very proprietary manufacturing process, and they brought in their own equipment to do, to do the test that we were doing and are doing. Unfortunately, it takes up too much space in our plant. Part of, part of the reason we had to move them out is we're doing some modification to our facilities to increase production capacity for lotion ingredients, so water-based materials, and we'll be installing some reactors and moving things around. We couldn't move our materials out, and we just literally had to get them out of the building to do that. And we found that this is probably the best thing to encourage our customer to, to do one of two things, either commit to the process here quickly or to take their equipment back because they're getting free real floor space in our facility at to no advantage to us. We've moved to get as small units as possible. We looked at 40, we looked at 40-foot units, size of a truck, and we found them to be too large to get to the back, and we decided to move to get to two 20-foot units right now. We do have a contract that sometime in August, we will restart that process, so after we're done with this iteration, we may actually be able to get down to two-one Conex based on, based on the equipment that they no longer need. And so what we're doing is we're doing process development work for them. This is their equipment, and instead of putting it outside with tarps that will eventually rot and wind and blow and bother our neighbors, this is, this we felt is a better approach for preservation of the equipment as well as preservation of the beauty of the landscape. So we have had really no inquiries since we posted regarding these. We do understand that it's currently, or there is, it's kind of a nebulous area as far as ordinances go, but we asked before we did this, because I've worked in places where this is an ordinance requirement for Conexes, as they can, they seem to breed, multiply, divide, and then you'll have an eyesore. We don't want that to happen. So this is, this will be moving out as soon as we can move it out, but our projections are we may need it for the full five years. What is being stored in them now are pumps, vacuum pumps, some reactor mixer heads. There are no transmission oils and anything that we're storing out there, so there's no chance of oil leaks. There's, there are some stabilizing reasons in the, in the bearings that are there, but they're just standard bearing sets, so you're out unless we have, unless there is a brushfire, we should not see any type of heat that would, would cause, to cause that to come out of the environment. They are contained units, and they are fairly heavy, so they should stay stable probably to, probably to, after a tornado. We did not stake them down for that purpose, but that's, that's where we are with them. So any questions?
Questions for Mr. Mancini. I would just add that Planning and zoning commission in, when you appeared before them, limited the number of containers to two. You had talked about them multiplying, and I just wanted the Board to know that you were limiting that to no more than two of those containers, Conex containers.
That is correct. We, we actually have storage facilities that we're trying to augment so we don't have that issue, but with this being customer equipment, it actually is a better, I should say, political move for us to, to have it contained so that we don't hit their equipment with a forklift while we're trying to maneuver stuff in our building, so.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this application for a special use permit for ACCI, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing. And we'll move on to Council Bill 009.
An ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a five-year special use permit to ACCI specialty materials to utilize a maximum of two Conex storage containers at 1701 Vine Street, subject to certain conditions and establishing an effective date.
I have a question, just out of curiosity. I just want to make sure, the ordinance that we put in place with the storage containers and sheds and stuff like that for residents, I'm assuming this is fall under that or because it's commercial?
Glad you brought that up.
And then my, my second question, and you'll be able to answer this too, even though you told us that they're not going to store hazardous anything in there, will we be checking that? At, will we be doing inspections of any kind of any of that?
Yes.
Yes, both, or?
You know, one, when we voted down that ordinance, it addressed two or three different subjects. One was, and I think this was the primary, your primary concern and the majority of the Board, they did, one of the provisions talked about allowing accessory structures inside yards, and that seemed to be, we, we never even got to another provision, which right now, we don't have much direction when people want to have Conex storage containers in M1, M2, or agriculture zoning districts. And we really don't think they're that great of eyesores within, within limits. And so we had, had a, one of the amendments that we had in that ordinance was to regulate this so that we could handle this request administratively. It just didn't get brought up, and it's something that I'd like to break up in the future again. There was a couple provisions in that ordinance that I don't think would be a concern to the Board, but we just, in the heat of the moment, we just never got to them because of the concern about the accessory structures of the side yards. So if the Council is, is okay with it, somewhat in the future, I'd like to bring a couple of those items back that I think could be less controversial.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't, residents are going to then come to us and go, well, if they can do it, I can.
Yeah.
And you did answer the question, you will be able to inspect to ensure that there's no hazardous materials being stored.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowe, Mr. Mancini? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move Council Bill 009 to its second reading.
Second. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to advance Council Bill 009 to suspend the rule and advance it to its second reading. Roll call.
Alderman Zaring.
Yes.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Second reading.
Council Bill 009, an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a five-year special use permit to ACCI specialty materials to utilize a maximum of two Conex storage containers at 1701 Vine Street, subject to certain conditions and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill 009 becomes ordinance number 3487. Council Bill 010.
An ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending section 110.180 of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances to change the regular meeting time the Board of Aldermen meets from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. and establishing an effective date.
And I'll speak to this. You know, there are some times when we have our work sessions at 5:30, and we have a short agenda, and we're done at 6:00 or 6:15, and we have a lot of time to kill before we have our regular meeting. So I think in, in the interest of efficiency, we thought we would just kind of flip those two meetings and have our Board of Aldermen meeting at 6:00, and then have the work session, if we have a work session, have it scheduled to immediately follow the Board of Aldermen meeting. So that's why this is being brought to you.
If I can ask a question, if it's possible for the employees, probably most importantly, could we, if it's a very short work session, could we potentially have the work sessions prior to the meeting? That way, we'd get everybody out of here a lot sooner, instead of having to keep the employees here after the, the regular meeting. Is that possible?
I think the way the meetings are posted, the meeting is posted that the Board of Aldermen meeting would commence at 6:00. I don't know that we necessarily, Mr. Attorney, that we necessarily can vary from that.
No, I'm, I mean leaving, having the regular meeting always at 6:00 if we pass this, but have, be able to have the work session before rather than after if it's a very short work session.
Is that an option?
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
So then the public comes at 6:00 expecting it to be a Board of Aldermen meeting, but the Board of Aldermen meeting doesn't commence until 6:30 because we allowed a work session at, to begin at 6:00. Am I not following your question?
No.
Just a second, Alderman Davidson.
No, what I'm asking is if we, if it was a very short work session, not like tonight, but a very short something that just needs to be addressed, have a work session at 5:30, and then the regular meeting at 6:00. That way, the employees that may need to be here for the work session don't have to wait till after the regular meeting. That's the question.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. Yes, absolutely, we can do that. Alderman Turner.
But I thought the point of changing the time was so we could have the work sessions afterwards and we're not limited on time, because sometimes we think something's quick and simple, isn't being drug out. And I mean, if we, I guess we could start it and then stop it, and then restart afterwards, but.
Oh, I think that's what I'm, I mean, there's, sometimes you know it's going to be a quick session. That's all I'm asking. That way, we get the employees out of here. If, because I hate to keep the employees through a regular session if they're going to need to be needed after the, the regular meeting. So that would be my only question. Absolutely, there's going to be times when you know the meeting's going to be longer, and we'll have the work session afterwards. I just wanted to make sure that we could have the work session prior to, if we knew it was going to be a short for me.
Alex?
Sure. So I know on this ordinance itself, we do say that the city desires to begin the regular meetings of the Board of Aldermen prior to the Board of Aldermen work sessions. So that, that's the way the language reads now. If we post notice of the work session being, well, the work session as this would go would be kind of a fluid time, right? It could start at 5, it could start at 6:45, it could start at 7:15, depending on when the sentence. So as long as we're not posting notice, that for sure, the work session would begin at a certain time, as long as everyone's in agreement, I, I don't see any issues with that.
Okay.
You're, you're leaning forward like you have something to say.
No, I'm good. Works better for me.
Well, we thought it would just be a more efficient use of everybody's time, so. Is there any further discussion? Entertain a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
It's an ordinance.
Sorry, make a motion to suspend the rules. Suspend the rule and move to second reading.
I have a motion for Alderman Davidson to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill 010 to its second reading. I have a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
And Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you, second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending section 110.180 of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances to change the regular meeting time the Board of Aldermen meets from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. and establishing an effective date.
Roll call.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance, I'm sorry, Council Bill 010 becomes ordinance 3488, and that change will be in effect as of our next meeting, March the 16th, 6:00 p.m., followed by work session if necessary. Alderman in committee reports. Alderman Zaring.
I have nothing at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Dorhoff?
We will be having a town hall this Saturday morning, 9:00. We'll be having Dan Brower with Cass County Library as our guest. I'll be informed that I'm bringing donuts this time, so please come out, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Alderman Milner?
I, mine's not much, as much as a statement as it is a question, and you almost let me forget to ask this question.
No, you're not, you're not that talkative.
I got to talk again. I, it was brought up to me by someone within the school district. As they drive to towns, and I'm sure you all have seen them, as you drive into certain communities, you see signs that say state champion football, state championship soccer, softball, and they thought, you know, what a nice thing that would be for our community. And how would we go about that? Would that be, would that be something the city would, would be interested in, in taking care of, like at our Welcome to Harrisonville locations? So something to kind of mull over. It, it's kind of a cool thing when you drive into towns and see what their communities have accomplished. So I think I posted that email, did I post an email to you about that? Okay, it must have just been you and I. But I thought that would be kind of a neat thing to think about, so kind of put that in your thought process and, and it kind of makes you, makes us be proud of our, of our kiddos in our community and what they can accomplish.
And it's a timely question, I think, because I'll, I'll let the Board and the audience know that at our next meeting on March the 16th, we're going to recognize the ladies' wrestling team, who is only in its second year of existence and won state championships. So we'll be doing a proclamation in their honor, so I'm just kind of tagged on to your comment about sports excellence. Alderman Reese?
Just to echo, just to echo the preview, I'm getting all tangled up here. Just to echo what, what David said over there, the town hall meeting is, it sounds so boring, you guys, it really does. It sounds like, oh, gosh, I've got to get up at 8:00 in the morning, get myself ready, and go and listen to a bunch of garbage. That couldn't be farther from the truth. We have more fun at those meetings, and we learn so much, not only from our guest speakers, but from each other. It is, if you're truly interested in the city of Harrisonville, come to the city hall meetings. If you have a question, it will be answered. If it's not answered, we'll find somebody to get you unanswered. So we need you there. 9:00, Saturday morning, Methodist Church in the hub. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Milner?
Nothing, thank you.
Alderman Dickerson?
I just wondered if anybody else had been contacted about the taste in the water?
We have, and Mr. Patterson can address that for us, yes.
I asked the same question today.
Step to the microphone.
I suppose it smells like cucumbers.
Yes, we've had numerous calls. I think we've tracked it down. Part of the problem is we schedule cleaning our basins at the water plant. We do it in the spring and in the fall. Well, it looks like the Alge- [inaudible]. Well, it looks like the build, algae buildup has gotten a little bit thicker this year than normal years, so two weeks ago we dropped down the primary basin and cleaned it, and this last weekend we dropped that basin down and cleaned it, we've noticed it better in the water plant right now, it'll take approximately a week for that water to hit all parts of town, hopefully that will take care of it, uh, but we did, we had many conversations with Burns McDonald about it and they agreed that that was a good place to start and so far it seems to be okay.
So that is what the problem is, is algae in the basement.
Maybe, we think it is. Time will tell.
So we have a water car full with that? Water.
Well, that, and then all the pipes in the ground, so.
So the flavor then would be coming basically from the cleaning process, more so than the algae process?
Yes, sort of, I mean, it, there's nothing wrong with water, it needs everything it needs to make, it's just an unpleasant odor and taste, um, yeah, keep in mind, this is ozone, system is new to us, so we're trying to get everything ironed out, uh, and we've never had this issue before, so I'm hoping that cleaning the basins does take care of it, because we normally don't have that much buildup this time of the year, uh, but it's been an extremely wet year, can anyone else remember a time when the ground never froze? I think all these things come together and our basins have been hit by it.
Are you gonna put a public statement in our blue letter about what's going on with that?
You can do that.
I'm tired of guessing what is wrong.
We can absolutely add that.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Davidson.
Well, both of you kind of stole my thunder in regards, the, the women's, um, wrestling team, uh, they already committed, like I said, the second year and they're state champions in all classes, um, I think it's, it's important that we recognize the cooperation between the city and the school district, how one makes the, brings success to the other, and I like that idea, I never really thought about it, you go different places and it always does, or not always, but a lot of places do have that and I think it's something we need to look into, um, there was a, um, dear graduation, uh, on the twenty-fourth, um, Officer Jacobs and Officer, Officer Miller should be committed, uh, they had a hundred seventy-five graduates at the, uh, um, P A C, at the high school, and I think it's a great opportunity to be able to, um, bring information to our young, our youth, uh, in regards to drugs and alcohol, um, also, um, have been lucky to be part of the CARES Coalition that we, that the group meet every, uh, every month or so, and I would like the chief, I'm sorry to put it, I always put him on the spot, but I'm gonna ask him to step forward because I want him to tell a little bit about traction, what it's doing, and also about a potential article that's gonna come out, uh, that I want everybody to look forward to, so if you tell everybody, you can do it a lot better than I can, I don't wanna run it, so if you would, um, do that, I would appreciate it.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the board, um, traction team is that group of high school kids, they take, uh, three or four days in the summer, um, of their summer vacation and go to Columbia, and they're trained on how to come back to their school and teach other, uh, students and adults, uh, safe driving habits, whether it's distracted driving, uh, texting and driving, drinking and driving, uh, use of their phone, uh, while, but they are, they work as a group and they do different things throughout, um, the school a year, and then they'll go back, which we go back in, uh, about three weeks, we go to Columbia, I think I said Jefferson City earlier, I meant we go to Columbia, um, we'll go back to Columbia and they'll compete against the other, uh, teams in the state and they'll tell what they did throughout the year, um, and then they're determined to be, uh, there will be a decision on who's the traction team of the year for this year, Harrisonville won it two years ago, Belton won it last year, so we're kind of hoping to keep it in Cass County, uh, but they'll do different things throughout the year, uh, they'll do, uh, public service announcements in the schools, they've, they've got some bumper stickers that they're working with the local businesses to put out, as well as, um, bumper stickers on cars, they do seatbelt checks and report back, they do one early in the year, where if you're wearing your seatbelt, you get smarties, if you're not wearing your seatbelt, you get dumb dumb sucker, uh, so they do different, different things, but they are a great, great group of kids, uh, we've got a meeting scheduled this Friday with Representative Hafner, they wanna talk to him, um, about, uh, texting and driving, distracted driving, uh, seatbelt use, the helmet law, uh, and they also participate in Harrisonville CARES, it's really good to have, uh, kids there that care and that wanna go teach other kids and they're, they're a great asset to that CARES Coalition. The article, uh, that, uh, Alderman Davidson is referring to is, I went to I A C P in Chicago and I sent some information to one of the speakers in one of our traction shirts and she came back and asked if I would prepare an article, so we are preparing our article for I A C P magazine, it's a, uh, quarterly magazine and it's probably got, cause it's police chiefs, uh, probably about forty, forty-five thousand, uh, copies in this magazine, so we started the article, uh, and then they asked if it would be a fea- feature article, so they bumped us up a little bit, we've got an editor that's working with us, Casey from MoDOT will be part of it, I will be part of it, George Freeze, uh, the high school student will be part of it, the mayor's open a little bit, and then Joe Philet from the school, so, in addition to that, with traction, we've been asked to speak at the distracted driving and alcohol driving conference in San Antonio, uh, which is an I A C P event in August, so, uh, myself and Kelly Casey Morgan from MoDOT and George Freeze, and I will be speaking at that, hopefully my voice will be better by then, but, uh, great, great group of kids, doing a lot of things for Harrisonville.
I think so, what's so great about this is our youth, you know, a lot of times you think it's the adults who're trying to oppress upon the youth, well, this is youth trying to oppress upon other youth and adults, and so that's what I think I've, I've taken so much out of this, the opportunity to be part of this CARES Coalition, so, uh, that's the reason I wanted everybody to be able to hear this, whether they're local to, or they're here today, or whether they're gonna be watching it later on, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner.
The, end of last month, we had a planned zoning meeting, which, of course, you guys know about it now, we, we has a public hearing and, uh, special use permit request for two Conex storages, which we approved tonight, so, that's that, uh, the only thing is, the, uh, Herd Royal Regiment is having a mattress sale this Saturday, it's their big fundraiser, that's where Bang gets a lot of money, uh, it's time is from ten to five, so after the town hall meeting, you can go to the high school and buy a new mattress.
Thank you, Alderman.
Can John make sure that we all know when that article comes out, or give us a copy of it, or tell us where to go look for it, or can you make sure we know when it is?
We're told to come back, so I'm gonna follow the rules here, um, our deadline is April to have it in, it's the August edition of I A C P magazine, it's, uh, I don't know that you can go anywhere and buy it, so I'll try to get some.
Will it be online?
Probably.
Okay, will you just let us know when it's?
I'll try to remember.
And that's not Nationwide, that's Wolfwood.
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff.
Yes, ma'am, uh, also to commend the police department EMS, uh, and also Daniel, uh, we from last Sunday had a incident at the Quick Trip and ended well, um, from what it could have been, and everybody worked real well and communicated real well, and so we're thankful for that, um, then also the, um, police department, the vehicles that the board approved, two of them come in, the, the police department's received, ones ordered in, uh, January, uh, have not come in yet and they will be getting those, then I wanna talk about the statewide, um, tornado drill is tomorrow, uh, on the third, at, um, ten o'clock, we will not do the normal Wednesday, uh, monthly, um, test because we're doing the, the statewide tomorrow, so if anyone asks you, why didn't they go off Wednesday, because they went off Tuesday, um, we didn't think we needed to do it twice to be overachievers for that this week, so, uh, that'll be, uh, completed, and then in conjunction with that, it'll be on the seventh, is the, um, Storm Awareness Day, uh, the three different churches that's been, uh, handed out, it's been in newsletters, important for everybody to attend those and to learn more information, uh, with that, one of the things that, um, I have been privy to, uh, working with before is a different type of notification system that the city could be a part of and control, um, I'm gonna put Daniel on the spot a little bit and come to the podium to explain a little bit about that, where we will have ability to notify people, um, and send out through text messaging, uh, when those shelters are open, to when those, uh, events and special events, even the event, uh, that we had at the Quick Trip where the, uh, the police department could say avoid these areas, and it would be a straight notification, cause not everybody gets on and checks their Facebook, uh, or checks their Instagram or any of those other social media platforms, so he can give you a little bit of synopsis of what we'll be doing with that.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the board, um, so, uh, what Brad said is correct, uh, we're working with a company called Nixle, uh, they are an Everbridge product, um, and they're gonna be providing us with a service, um, that really allows us to, in an emergency situation, communicate directly with our residents, um, i- it's a simple thing to get involved with, uh, you send one text message with our zip code to eight 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 seven seven seven, um, and you are enrolled in any of the city's messaging, um, on that platform, um, it has automated, uh, severe weather, uh, messages from the National Weather Service, which will be really helpful, uh, especially as we're working on being more weather aware, uh, it's gonna be a big push for us going forward, uh, it'll also, like Brad said, um, with the event like what happened at the Quick Trip last Sunday, uh, will allow us to tell people which areas to avoid if we had to close down roads, um, especially in that intersection, uh, that'd be a really big deal, and this would allow us to get that to them really quickly, um, it also has a couple of other features, uh, for more community engagement, um, like, uh, during the Log Cabin Festival, you tell people what time events are happening, um, when roads will be closed, police department always asks that cars be taken off Pearl Street for the parade, uh, that's a message that we get out on social media, this would be another way, um, we can target specific areas, so we can target residents on Pearl, hit them with that message, um, and hopefully, uh, see a little bit more, uh, effective messaging there.
It'd be a really good tool, we've used it before and it, um, the, the other part of it is being able to easily sign up, uh, cause you're just texting the zip code and add to a six-digit number and then you're on, uh, from that point on, so it's not a long tedious process for someone to get online and try to, to sign up and do those kind of things, so, and it's something that the city has control over, uh, to be able to make sure that we're getting our residents informed about special events and different things that are going on, just another communication tool, uh, to try to be able to communicate with the residents, especially in the, we will use it more for emergency situations, emergency, uh, type of, of notifications, but the component for, uh, the community events is a nice component where someone, we can come up with a hashtag word, uh, to be able to text and then that person would get notifications about that entire event, and then as soon as that event's over, it would stop, and, uh, so it wouldn't be people going, oh my goodness, they keep texting me about this thing, but, um, it would be, uh, very effective, so I'm glad for that.
Um, if I may add one thing, i- it does also have a hand-in-hand component where it works with our social media platform, so people who are used to looking for information from us on social media, uh, if we choose, it can automatically, if we send one message, it'll go to your phone and every social media platform that we have.
Let's save some time, Ron, going to each. Uh, we also, uh, with that event, the mayor did an interview with Channel Nine, it came, uh, to talk about the event and also Fox Four has also been involved with that as well, so we've gotten a lot of good, uh, exposure with that, uh, one of the things to discuss when we were talking about, uh, earlier about in the utility, uh, one of the things that staff has, uh, used before to help different people is, uh, West Central, and West Central has, um, not been able to, uh, assist people like they've had in the past, and so staff is trying to work with different residents that come in with different type of hardships, and that's been something that we've used West Central in the past, and that's something with the, some of the changes that's happened at West Central, that's not been a good communication tool as it's been in the past, so we're trying to do our best to, uh, communicate that with the residents as well as with, um, uh, staff to try to help out those that are in need. Then, uh, the report from that Blackland Beach is no longer pursuing that, um, uh, at Cantrell Road for those home-based cranes, uh, that we had discussions on, they decided to, uh, lease the cranes then own them, uh, so someone asked me where the cranes were and I looked up and I didn't know what they're doing, but first I'm a flying crane, uh, but that's the reason why, uh, for that, and then, uh, the Missouri Department of, uh, Historic Pres- Preservation, uh, approved the city's application for a forty-five hundred dollar grant, uh, to update historic square, uh, pres- preservation plan, and so it's, um, uh, approved by both parties of the grant for the agreement, so we're glad to see that, and then lastly, as of, uh, this last week, uh, there's been forty-five, uh, building permits, uh, that have been issued in the city of Harrisonville.
Thank you. I wanna thank the board for graciously agreeing and being flexible in changing the time of our meetings to six o'clock, um, that, I think that's just a really good step for us to have taken, and you'll be seeing some other things coming in, in subsequent meetings of changes that we wanna propose to the way that we conduct our meetings, um, that will just make us more efficient and more transparent. I wanna talk about Saturday, uh, Mr. Crowe is not going camping, um, there's a backpack sitting over there by him, uh, that is, uh, an emergency preparedness kit that, um, Roger, if you wanna go ahead and pull some stuff out of there, cause Daniel's got the camera on there, I would just like for some folks to see what's in there, this is gonna be a door prize that we're going to give, uh, we'll do a drawing for people who attend our Weather Aware Saturday, but there's first aid kit, there's first aid kit, there's a power pack for charging the cell phone, there's a blanket, there's a, a weather crank radio, water granola bars, um, just some really cool things, and you know what I love is, Daniel gave me this idea because he said his family has this, you put it all in a backpack, and so then you put the backpack in a closet or somewhere and whenever there's a weather alert, or you have to go to your basement or whatever, you grab that backpack and it has everything you need, so that, what a novel idea, I wanna encourage people to attend on Saturday, so, um, an anonymous donor has provided the funds for us to award that backpack as a door prize, so, um, I wanna thank Chief Hofer, he's here, I wanna thank Daniel, and if Chief Myler were here, I would thank him also, they've been meeting with me and with the churches for several months, putting this project together, and so I'm delighted that we have that strategic partnership with those three churches, Antioch Baptist, First Baptist, and Our Lady of Lords, to provide a space for people to go, uh, when a tornado may be predicted or be sighted, that, uh, folks who don't have a basement or who live in a mobile home, so Saturday is intended to be a practice run for them, you know, when we were all kids, we used to practice fire drills and tornado drills, we felt like, and it was Chief Hofer's suggestion, that, that it would be good to allow people the opportunity to see which shelter is closest to them, what door to go in, what to take with them, and to do it when there was not a pending storm over the city, so this is, as you heard, we're going to do tornado testing tomorrow, this is that weather, this is that tornado awareness week, and so it was appropriate to do the open house for the shelters this coming weekend, so from eleven to two, Saturday's gonna be, be a busy day, we have town hall meeting and Weather Aware Saturday, but from eleven to two, pardon me, um, those shelters will be open for people to stop in and they'll be marked, we have signs that are gonna be marking the entrances, um, it's just gonna be a good thing, and so I would encourage you all to spread the word, um, you know, a storm shelter is not any good if it's not used, so we want people to know where they are and if they need that kind of shelter, that they have it accessible to them, so, uh, if you wanna stop by, that would be awesome, you might win the backpack, you never can tell. All right, questions from the media?
Uh, my only question is, how's Roger gonna get all that stuff back in the backpack?
There you go, Roger, there's your challenge for the day.
Not much news these days, is there?
All right, no questions then, all right, mercy. Six ten dot O twenty-one.
I make a motion that we go into executive session, six ten dot O one. O twenty-one, pardon.
Thank you, I have a motion, we go to executive session, roll call please.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye, I'm second.
Thank you. Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorha.
Ayes.
And Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned to executive session.